All right. Good evening, welcome to the August 30th, 2022 Board of Select or Select Board Meeting. All rise to say pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So we'll start with announcements?
Okay, I'll start. After much thought, I have decided to step down from my seat on the Board of Select, on the Select Board. I have been a member of the Select Board going on ten years. In addition, I have worked for the town for thirty-four years. I feel it's time to pass the torch because the town could use some new blood. All to the goals I have made have been accomplished. One of my goals as Chairman of the Select Board was getting the town's financial records in order. Along with my fellow Select Board members, we hired an outside accounting firm and treasurer service, both of which put us back on the right track. Another goal was establishing a new personnel board, which we did. Through our efforts, we created an updated stepping grade chart, which paved the way for the employee raises to be equitable and on par with area communities. The Personnel Board also composed a personnel handbook for the employees. When I was candidate, running for select, and one of my goals was to see more unity in the town, I am happy to witness an increase in goodwill and fellowship in the community. I will continue to be a familiar face in the town, as I will be working as the Assistant Town Clerk and remain on the Personnel Board. I would like to thank the Brookfield residents for supporting me throughout the years. I am grateful for the friends I have made. Now that we have Kelly as our Town Administrator, I feel that I'm leaving the town in good hands. My official resignation will be as of Monday, September 19th. Thank you again.
Thank you, Linda. We can't, we can't thank you enough for all the work that you've done and you're continuing to do in those other roles.
Yeah, thank you.
So, I will be, I will be sad to see you go. So, the next item on the agenda is a report on warrants signed.
All right. I was in last week, and I reviewed the expense and payroll warrants. And the warrant for eight twenty-three twenty-two was a hundred ninety-six thousand, one hundred forty dollars and forty-two cents. Payroll warrant for eight twenty-four twenty-two for a hundred fifty thousand, six hundred and twenty-nine dollars and eighty-six cents. A withholding warrant for eight twenty-four twenty-two for fifty-two thousand, two hundred and seventy-eight dollars and seventy-two cents.
All right, thank you for that.
You're welcome.
Okay, so the first order of new business is discussion of a school zone for Willow Brook on Route Nine.
I'm hoping...
Should we hold that one for...
Maybe.
No.
No? Hi? Nope, wrong person. Yeah, why don't we hold on to that? I asked them, they said they would come, but I'm not sure.
Okay.
I sent him a reminder email, but it may not have been...
Oh, there it is.
There we go.
Hi, perfect timing. Come on in. Not to put you on the spot, but do you want to come up to the table and introduce yourself?
Sure.
Thank you.
Sure. So, most of you know me, but my name is Shelby Hill, and this is my husband, Drake.
We're residents and owners of Willow Brook Academy.
Okay, and so my understanding is we're here to have a discussion regarding placing a school zone in the vicinity of Willow Brook?
Yes, correct.
Yep, so we, we reached out to Senator Goby's office because it's a state road to see...
Right. That was the first question I was gonna have, was the fact that it is a state road.
Correct. We've already met with Mass DOT and our lovely Town Manager.
Lovely Town Manager.
Town Administrator.
The term uses the term loosely, but I appreciate it.
It was a very nice meeting, it was the first time I met her, so.
And Ryan was also there.
Yep, and Ryan was there as well.
And we're from Mass DOT.
Yep. And we had a discussion, looked at the, what the options were, if we met the criteria, and how they would go about it. So, part of that process is to come before you, to get approval, to put the school zone in, and then they would see what the best course of action would be as far as implementing.
So, under the Mass DOT rules, any school that's on one of their state roads, they're the ones who determine whether or not they get a school zone. The first step is for the Board to determine whether or not they would be in favor or behind it.
That we support it, yes. Fundamentally, we're weighing in.
So, they're talking about making, so these are the options that were discussed, but this is not the end-all and be-all of the conversation.
Okay.
Having the school zone go from the beginning of the school zone down here, past Willow Brook, so it would be about a mile long. They have a limit of about a quarter of a mile in their own regulations, but there's new legislation coming up that may change that. So, that's the first step. The second thing is having signage put up that, you know, you're in a school zone, you're out of the school zone, punch it, you're back in a school zone, breaks please, and possibly putting in crosswalks to make it safer for the kids to be able to access the municipal buildings such as the library and maybe coming to Town Hall.
Okay.
So, those, those are currently the two plans that Mass DOT has discussed. We're looking at who owns the piece of land that has George Washington Didn't Sleep Here Monument? And, and depending on who owns that, they may be able to put in, because they have to make it handicap accessible from the crosswalk up to the sidewalk, which is well behind that piece of, of land. So, if they own it, then they were talking about possibly putting a crosswalk in there. And then there's some, if we put in a solar light, we maintain it, if we have, which is what they were recommending, because they didn't need the electrical lighting to put in.
Right, right. Yeah, the solar lights are, are, have advanced to the point where...
They're, they're...
Well worth putting in, and, and they're adequate for safety's sake.
So, that's, that's where we're at, and so I think what they would be looking for is, is to whether or not you would support a school zone going in.
Okay, so can I get a motion, any additional discussion?
Just that, since when I was on the Planning Board, when you first came before, I was hoping a school zone would be put in, because I noticed the traffic and people flying down, because it goes from forty-five to thirty-five.
Right.
Right before the school.
Right before the school.
Buzzing by.
And people just...
And then they, like you said, they gun it as soon as they leave the elementary school there, if they slow down at all.
Yeah.
So, I'm totally for it.
And, and honestly, if they were willing to do the contiguous school zone, that Proudy Street intersection is a hazard. It's been a hazard for years. We're, we're fortunate that we haven't had anything worse happen than, than...
And it would help with Lewis Field access.
Yes, Lewis Field also.
Just being slower.
I mean, I'm open to either one, because even if it's a start, stop, start, it'll still slow people down fundamentally, but I'll take it.
I think it's a good idea also, I agree with that.
Yeah.
So, you wanna, you want a...
A motion to support a school zone.
I will make a motion to support a school zone for the Willow Brook School.
I will second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Well, thank you guys.
You're very welcome.
You're welcome.
I think it will make it much safer for them.
Oh, yes.
Yeah.
For sure.
And, and a byproduct of potentially making it safer in some of the other spaces, so.
Absolutely.
So, it's good.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Payless, right?
Yeah.
We need a, we need a Staples button here.
Yeah.
I know.
For some of this, at least.
You, you mentioned on Proudy Street, I've been walking about a month and a half, I've been walking, walking path, and in two days, I saw an accident, one after another.
Oh, really?
Down there. That was about two weeks ago. One car came down so fast, he did a ninety-degree turn in the road and hit another car. And they, he, the one that was coming down Proudy was trying to beat the light. You know, they were trying to beat that other car, and they didn't make it, and nobody got hurt luckily, but I mean, the hoods came flying off the cars and everything, it was a mess down there.
Wow.
It is, but it, it, people just don't want to be cautious anymore, so maybe that will help down there.
I, I agree, this is really important that we have that.
Oh, yeah.
However, there's a good possibility that the MODs null-avoiding...
Gotta say no.
If, when they do this. So, that's gonna have to be redone.
That the what?
Because it's the, the marijuana overlay district.
Oh...
Because you now have all of these school zones, you've got a five-hundred-foot radius around any school zone, and you have a really tiny MOD, so it's a constructive moratorium within the school zone at the other end of it. I haven't looked at the exact specifics, which I will need to do, but just keep that in the back of your head, because that's gonna need to be addressed at least by next year if they put this in.
Yep. Well, you know, we, so let's, let's put a, let's put a, a pin in contacting the Planning Board, and, and the reason why I say that is that we need, I think we do also need to address not the manufacturing industrial aspect, but I think we do want to also address the agricultural aspect of, of marijuana within the town. So, I don't think we need a bunch of factories standing up, but we are, we are a farming community, so it might, we maybe can handle both aspects of that in, in one sweep and one review of the bylaw.
Yeah, I think that's, I think that's a good plan.
So, um, so let's just reach out and, and ask, and if they need some support or help, then let's, let's see what we can do about it.
Absolutely.
Either finding some grant money or finding some third party that can help with the revision of the law appropriately.
Okay. Mr. Graves, put his hand up.
Yes.
The follow-on should be, if they do update school zone, maybe we could get something a little better up here at the school.
Would it be better?
Because it is pretty sun at the top of the building.
Yeah, there's no...
There's no warnings to it, and those lights are...
Signage was...
Those lights have been off there forever.
Signage is, is one of the things that the state is looking at for reviewing for the whole section, so that's actually on their radar.
Yeah.
If we're putting the lights up here and we're maintaining them afterwards, if we're saying, I maintain those, maybe we can update that as well.
So, the lights that they're requiring us to put in at the, at the new construction, they maintain those, we don't maintain them. So, I don't, I don't know how far we're at.
Well, you said that if they put solar, we...
No, 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 if we put solar here, we maintain solar, but they're requiring us to put electric lights down at the school, not solar. I don't, I know there's a term for it, but where's Ryan when I need him? He would just rattle it off the top of his head.
What was the question again?
The lighting, putting signage up.
Oh, yeah.
To help with the school district making it safer now where it already is pre-existing. But they're looking at the whole area and what needs to be done. And signage was one of the things that we talked about, going from the school district here all the way down the street, even if the school zone isn't completely the full distance, we want signage to make it safer in crosswalks.
So, fundamentally, I think, will we have any additional input? I mean, I know you already met with the DOT, but we have additional...
We have absolutely no input.
Okay, it's totally up to them.
After, after this, it's entirely up to them, because it's on their state road.
Okay.
I can give you a copy of the regulations. I have them sitting on my desk, so I can, I'll scan them and email them to you tomorrow.
Is it, is it worth, is it worth drafting a communication to them, just pointing out that, that what we've got for the current school zone is a little iffy?
We already talked about that with them, and they took Goby's notes, but I can remind them.
Sometimes it helps to tell people in writing, that way if they don't do it and we find it's an ongoing issue, we at least can say we told you so. Not perfect, but...
Okay.
Right, okay. So, the next item on the agenda is voting to hold a special election for two seats on the Select Board. So, fundamentally, we had the announcement...
From Linda.
From Linda, today, and...
I'm moving.
And there's the announcement.
And there's the announcement from Adam, so...
All right, what is it? I found out officially, was it two weeks ago? And then came to see Kelly last week, so pretty much came as quick as I could, gave as much notice as I could, and it's towards the middle to end of October, no official date yet.
Okay. So, we've got a little bit of time.
Yes, it'll be before said special election.
Okay.
No matter what.
Okay.
So that I don't leave, just essentially, potentially take off after a week or two, after the election, and then left stranded.
Right.
So, the special election will be on November sixth.
Yeah.
Because it's the same day as the...
It's the same day of the state election.
State election, yes, because we timed it perfectly. We barely got in under the wire.
Oh, really?
Without having to create another additional election day.
Election, okay.
So, we'll be, we'll have the ballots printed, and it'll be on the same ballot.
So, when are we opening up pulling papers?
I think...
And when, when is it gonna close?
It's forty-nine, I'm pretty sure it's forty-nine days before the election, that you have to pull the papers.
I have, I have the list in a minute.
Is that right?
In a second.
And it's sixty, and for your election, it's sixty-four, sixty-four days from tonight.
Okay.
Well, no.
No? That's what Mike had told me.
Mike said we have to let them know no less than sixty-four days.
Oh, no less than sixty-four.
So, sixty-four days would actually be September fifth.
Okay.
Okay, so it did give a little, all right.
Okay, so...
And then the nomination papers have to be out, I thought he said forty-nine days before the election.
I'm gonna look right now, because I have an email from him, and I'll be able to tell you exactly. Probably quicker for me to actually just go walk to my desk.
Okay.
Rather than do this, hold, give me a moment.
That's fine.
Yeah, he has to do a schedule up. He always does a schedule, he's got to do it.
Yeah, that's already done, I have it sitting, it's actually on the website, waiting to post itself tomorrow morning. But, excuse me.
Yeah, actually, if it's the first Monday, it's November seventh, I believe, would be the election, if this is the right year.
Could be.
No, no, it's gonna be...
It's not a Sunday for an election, right?
No, no, it's gonna be the same day as the, the state election.
Okay, is that the first, second Tuesday?
No, that's the eighth.
So, this is the eighth?
The eighth.
Yeah.
So, that's when he's gonna do it.
Okay.
And he's run, he's run elections with two ballots before.
Oh, yeah, we've run plenty of elections with two ballots before. So, if it's forty-nine days before the election is when people can start to pull papers or have to pull papers by?
That's, they have to pull papers by, I'm pretty sure, because we had talked about it. He wasn't quite sure about the days.
Because that takes us back to the twentieth of September, if I'm doing my math correctly?
Well, Kelly's gonna bring it in, but when Mike and I, when Mike and I talked about it.
Okay, and so that means, so are, are the people eligible to pick up papers now? Or do we have to somehow announce it?
No, it has to be announced, and you know, you have to get together with Mike when he wants to do it.
So, that would be put on the website bulletin board?
On the Facebook page, once we vote to hold a special election.
In the town Facebook page, yep.
Yep. I always do stuff backwards, we should make the motion and second it and then have a discussion, but it's, it's all right. One of these days, I'll get it right.
The, the hope is that my move is more towards the end of the month, so that there's less downtime.
Right.
Between when the Board can meet.
Right.
Or the individual of the Board can meet.
Right, so...
So, did you find a bigger house?
Yeah.
Because I know you'd mentioned that a few weeks ago, your wife wanted a bigger house.
Yep.
And the property.
And the property.
Oh, you have the property, oh, good.
So...
It happens. It was not my intention, I'll say that.
All right, do we wanna...
Two, two years and a half.
Do we want to stick a pin on this? Oh, there, that was a great way to get Kelly back in the room. Said it was a great way to get you back in the room, I was about to move on to the vacation carryover and figured we could come back to it.
That's twice, because we were gonna move, the first discussion, they came in, we were gonna move this one, and then it came in.
We're magical. Okay, so, Wednesday, we notify the Town Clerk of the vote from this evening, then the nomination papers will be available tomorrow.
Right.
The last day to obtain and return nomination papers will be September twentieth, the last day for candidates to withdraw will be October fourth, the last day to register to vote for the special election will be October twenty-ninth, the last day to post the warrant will be November first, and special town election will be November eighth.
Perfect.
No less than twenty signatures and no more than fifty voters shall be required.
Fifty voters, got it. Okay. So, can I get a motion to hold a special election for the town of Brookfield on November eighth?
I will make a motion to have a special election on November eighth.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, next item is vacation carryover for Peter Martell. Appears he has thirty hours to carry over.
Yes, so what happened was Peter sent an email asking for this back in the beginning of July, which was not noticed, and so it wasn't put on an agenda. So, I asked him to forward me the email, which he did, and it was indeed, he sent it the first week of July, so, no, I'm sorry, June, June, he sent it the first week of June, not July. So, I told him that I would put it on the agenda, because he did do it properly and in the right timeframe.
Okay.
He has since used some of the hours that he, he used him during the last year, so he's only asking to carry over thirty. He had thirty-eight originally.
Okay, got it. And so we've been pretty consistent in approving carryover, but requesting that the person finish out the year with less than what they started.
Mm-hmm.
So, and we're talking, what, thirty hours?
Yeah, but he's no longer in the room, so we can't ask him if he's got less than what he started with, but you have approved, and you ask people that by a certain time they're going to carry over thirty, so it's within that wheel.
Well, that's what I'm saying, no, that's what I'm saying. Yeah, yeah. Did we set it as a blanket to carry over only thirty, or was it that we were targeting to be no more than thirty?
You were targeting it. It wasn't a blanket, but you were targeting it, if I remember correctly.
I think it was target first, and then set next.
In the second, in, in the following year, yep, okay. All right, so that's good. So, he's already really at the threshold that we've, we've set as the informal max to carry over, so can I get a motion to approve his vacation carryover retroactively?
I will make a motion to do a vacation carryover for Peter Martell and do it retroactively.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, next item on the agenda is to appoint the Treasurer as the tax title custodian. So, can I get a motion to appoint Amy Lane Carmody?
I will make a motion to appoint the Treasurer as the tax title custodian.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. There you go.
When are, they were supposed to be having, I know some auctions that those have been put off.
I'm actually gonna be speaking with the auctioneer tomorrow. The letters are ready to go out to the butters, the tax title attorney is, so we're all set to roll, we just need a date, and the auctioneer, it's a self-funding auction, actually, to take the proceeds out of the sales.
Right, yeah, it's like usually a buyer's premium.
They do all the advertising, they do all the, all the legwork, so it's a beautiful setup, it really is.
Okay. Do we have the finalized list that went to them?
I do, but not with me, there's, because I wasn't anticipating that question, actually, tonight.
Sorry.
And if we, I believe there are ten or twelve parcels that are being auctioned off.
So, even though we don't have a date, can we just put it on the next agenda to just discuss, like what's, what's gonna be on it and when it's gonna be, unless it's somehow gonna happen in the next two weeks?
It will not happen in the next two weeks, more than likely it will happen in, well, I was shooting for the last week of September, first week of October.
Okay.
So, depending on how his schedule is, he's had the data for a few weeks now and been able to research the parcels, and sent them over the maps and all of the parcel IDs, the field cards and so on, so he could do...
His due diligence.
His due diligence, and then I'll, I'll speak with him tomorrow and see where he's at and what, what he's expecting, so.
Okay, great. Okay, next item on the agenda is to appoint Dennis Clark to the Engineer Qualification Committee. Can I get a motion for that?
You have, can, oh, yeah, I'll give you a motion, to appoint Dennis Clark to the Engineer Qualification Committee.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I wanted to ask a question.
Oh, I'm sorry.
So, an Engineer, Engineer Qualification Committee, what is that, is that something new?
So, for the CDVG grant for Green Street, we have an engineer qualification. We sent out the RF, RFQ, so request for qualifications in this particular instance to hire an engineer, even though it's exempt from procurement, the government and, and I recommend that you still have a competitive process.
Yep.
So, when I read the RFQ, I realized that a lot of this project is water.
Mm-hmm.
More than is roadwork, which I, I was not actually, like, it didn't register, I wasn't aware, whatever the reason was, and Dennis had not been included in any of the conversations, and so I reached out to Dennis and said, hey, I just read the RFQ, why aren't you involved in this? And he said, I don't know, I was in the beginning. So, we met with Chris Dunphy, and we discussed the RFQ with Dennis and Ryan, myself and Chris, and we went through it, and I told the people at the table at the time that I was going to ask that he be appointed, because it's important that he be in this process all the way through.
Oh, yes.
Right, absolutely.
So, that's why I'm asking that he be appointed to the committee.
Okay, makes sense.
It does, right?
It does.
You want your water superintendent involved where the water system is being touched.
Yep.
So...
Okay, so, we've got a motion and a second?
Yep.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We've got a couple of invoices hypothetically, except that I'm not finding them.
It was mine, mine is the first folder.
Yep.
I don't know about...
Is this the one?
Yes, this is it.
Everybody else apparently has a copy, or else I'm missing it, so that's okay, thank you. It looks like we've got invoices for a total of two thousand, one hundred and twenty dollars and forty-three cents specifically for...
Labor.
Labor, and this is for the FY twenty-one CDVG grant.
This is the Green Street grant.
So, can I get a motion to approve that invoice?
I will make a motion to approve the CDVG FY twenty-one, CDF Program Invoice Number Two for FY twenty-one.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, so, next item on the agenda is Apple Country Radio Discussion. We received correspondence from Apple Country Radio, and Ms. Mahoney, did you want to come up and speak with us? We received correspondence from Apple Country Radio, and Ms. Mahoney, did you wanna come up and speak with us?
I'll answer any questions right there.
Okay.
Did you have an opportunity to read the email that you received?
Yes.
And, and then she provided some verification documentation this evening.
Right.
Showing that she has an active license and.
Right. Great, thank you so much, Mr. Taff. So fundamentally, in a nutshell, as I understand it, is that you, you've been operating the FM community radio since sometime after January of twenty seventeen, when we got the license for it, out of the, one of the buildings associated with the, the Gavit wire and cable.
That's correct. If you look on Central Street, the address of the Gavit factory is twenty central. But next to the main factory building going toward the elementary school on the same side is a ranch-sized building, but it's ninety degrees facing the, the road. So it's not lengthwise along the road, it's, it's endwise, and it's got a square facade. And the Chessens, I saw that it was empty, I'm gonna apply for the license, and I called up Lisa Baker and I said, would you give us the space? And they gave it to us for nothing. And they took a twelve thousand dollar a year tax deduction because we are a five oh one C three. So it was win-win for both sides. We did have to renovate, there were upgrades we had to do, both required by code, because it was a change of use, and required because we needed water and electricity and, and an internet. And we were in the process of doing that, and then COVID hit. And everything ground to a halt. I had a list of volunteers and they became unavailable, and there were some other volunteers, some of whom were in this room. And, but you can't do a building that size with only one or two people, especially since the person running the whole operation also has two or three other responsibilities.
Great.
So when we found out that they were selling the building, Lisa Baker gave us an end date of December twenty twenty-three. And of course, we instantly stopped all upgrades. Why spend money on a space you're not gonna have at the end of eighteen months? The, the problem is that our antenna is also located on that building. They graciously allowed us to put the antenna up on the highest peak of the, the main building, we're facing toward Route nine. We had to pay for it, it cost us ten grand, but they did give us the space, which is invaluable because renting a tower would have cost us another fifty thousand dollars. But that's going to have to come down too, obviously. So we have no place, we don't have a studio, I'm working on that, and we don't have a place for the antenna. The only other suitable places I found are both owned by the town of Brookfield. And each has challenges and each has advantages. The one, one of the two is the water tower. And I, I researched this, it's been done before, where antennas have been put on top of the water tower for radio. Last time I brought this up, the then-water superintendent brought it before the town council, and she required us to do a study, and it would have cost us five hundred dollars. Then the Chessen offer came along, and we abandoned that idea. But if we went with the water tower as a fallback, we would also have to put a structure, a weatherproof structure on the grounds to hold the transmitter and the emergency alert system boxes, plus run power up to that box and run an internet connection up to that box. The advantage is that it's the highest point in town. We'd get better coverage. The other location is the clock tower. And just to be sure that I wasn't chasing after rainbows, I talked to Peter Martel. And he, I asked him to check with this tech guy and see if there was any sort of engineering problem if we put our antenna there and our signal might or might not interfere with the first responder radios that are already located up there. And his tech guy got back and basically said, if you put something called a low-pass filter in all three antennas, and those devices cost maybe two hundred dollars each, it should alleviate the problem. And then there were logistics, of course, of bringing the three-quarter inch cable from the antenna to the transmitter, and the transmitter would have to be located somewhere in this building.
How much space does the transmitter require?
The transmitter is as big as a breadbox. It is, it is two rack units high, so it's about this high.
Right.
It's about this wide, and it's about this deep, and the emergency alert system is the same dimensions.
Okay.
It's not one of these big monsters like you see in a fifty thousand watt blowtorch station, in other words.
Understood.
But it does require power and it does require an internet connection. So those would have to be worked out. But I, I also went before the town improvement committee, and they agreed in principle to this. I thought just out of courtesy, I should go to them first.
Well, I'm glad that you did that, because that was gonna be one of my next questions.
Their vote was unanimous. I didn't go into the details with them because I really didn't think they would care, as long as they knew the basics, which I did tell them.
Okay.
So is this gonna be where you were at Gavit's old office?
I have to, we have to move the station completely out of Gavit's property.
Okay, so where are you putting it now?
Well, the antenna, if this board allows and the logistics work out, would go here. But the studio, it might end up in my guest room at home. Which would be unfortunate, because there's no way I could have volunteers traversing through the house to do programs. I would have to at least invest in more equipment to allow people to do remote hosting. And that would be approximately another six thousand dollars per person.
Well, I do, I do have a question.
Sure.
I know you're looking for, for options. I don't think there, there's probably not necessarily a requirement for it to be handicap accessible to, for the studio, correct?
It, it's not required, however, if you're a five oh one C three, they strongly encourage it. The thing is, as I've said, you could have somebody, there are various, and I'm sure that Adam could name some of them, there are ways that people can either tape their programs and then put them on Google, and then I could pick them up and, and program them. Or they could hand-deliver a video, an audio tape to the station, or mail it in. Or they, we could buy what's called a contracts box.
Right.
Which would allow direct internet connection, so that they could connect with the, the software we're gonna be using and include it in the, in the schedule when the time comes without any sort of logistic problems.
And I'm presuming that, given that the town hall improvement committee kind of at least in, in theory supports this.
She certainly did her due diligence. I mean, she made sure it wasn't gonna interfere with the.
With the first responders, responders, right, and, right.
I also asked the chief to give me the contact information for his tech guy, all I know is his first name, Jim, so that I could find out what other technical specs are absolutely required for this and work with him directly.
Okay.
But I would still have to hire an antenna company. The last time we put an antenna up on the Gavit building, it cost us nine thousand dollars. And a lot of that was just for the hiring, the bucket truck to put them there.
Yeah.
Yeah. My main question was, do we know what the structural integrity of the clock tower is to have an antenna? Another antenna up there?
Well, the antenna is a piece of bent metal. It goes.
It's just a little one?
It's a little one.
Okay.
And it would be mounted on a, I believe, an aluminum mast with supports. And the, the mast and supports would look a lot like the ones that are currently on the tower. And Peter even recommended a location. He said there's, you know, there are four faces to the tower, and two of them are taken up on opposite sides with the antennas. He recommended the face that is facing the fire station.
Okay.
Because it doesn't have anything on it, number one, and number two, a bucket truck can easily access it.
Right. So it'd be fairly easy.
Yeah. The, the tricky part would be getting the cable inside the building to, picking out a transmitter location that met the electronic requirements, and then getting the cable into the building. On Gavit, what they did was they, they actually, two hundred fifty feet of cable through the, the factory building, from where the antenna is into the building, along the eaves, and then that antenna cable emerged from the building, across from the office, the old office building, across the driveway, and then into the studio building.
Right.
With a, you know, a specialized, I don't know what you'd call it, like a connector, so that there wouldn't be any sort of leakage into the building.
Yeah.
And they also put in a fire, a lightning suppressor on it.
Okay.
To prevent not only from the transmitter being blown out, but having the, the cable blow up and set everything on fire.
Yeah, well, we do have some lightning suppression expertise on our town hall improvement committee, so we may be able to get a little bit of help there if we're putting it on the town hall. But, and, and what I was gonna recommend, because you've done such due diligence relative to the antenna, was I was wondering if this, there wouldn't be an option to partner with the library for some of the space on the second floor of the Felton House. Because it's space that doesn't get used a whole lot, there's an awful lot of it, and I think a lot of it is dry storage. It would have to be dedicated.
Those rooms are all, like, cordoned off, and I have, like, a breakdown of what they're used for, if we can go into them.
Yeah, she's got all kinds of displays.
If the whole thing is.
Is it, is it all solid, solid taken up at this point? Okay.
There is one small space in the building here, and it actually is a side of the stage. If you go into the ballroom, it used to be the green room, it's on the left-hand side of the stage. It's full of theater stuff right now. It's, it's, it's not as big as, as the Gavit building, which was the entire first floor of a ranch house. That was actually more space than we needed.
Right.
The reason I could, I have the fallback is putting this in my guest room is because you don't need a lot of space. I need a space enough for maybe an L-shaped desk like this. The main thing is getting electrical and, and internet connected.
Right.
But that space next to the stage would be sufficient size. I would have to have it dedicated. In other words, there would have to be a lock on each of the two doors, the door leading to the stage and the door leading to the ballroom itself. There's also a space accessible by a very narrow set of stairs above that.
Right.
And it's about the same size, and it's also full of theatrical stuff. But that would make, I, I have forty-two boxes of CDs that were donated, forty-two cartons of them. I'm gonna be putting them in my cellar temporarily. I've already put space in, in place for that. But that would be an ideal place to put those boxes of CDs.
Those should be digitized.
Yeah, yeah, we're working on it. We're working on it. The ones, the music that people hear now is, that's approximately eight hundred songs from approximately twelve hundred CDs that have already digitized. So it's gonna take me a while to do forty boxes of them, but, again, that was one of the reasons you, ideally, you'd want volunteer access, so you could train somebody to do that.
Right.
The minimum requirements for a studio, besides electrical and, and an internet, is that it has to be a dedicated space, because the equipment to broadcast is expensive. I have at the Gavit studio alone, ten thousand dollars' worth of equipment, not counting the transmitter and emergency alert system, ready to install. Broadcast boards, speakers, turntables, the whole nine yards. So it would need to be a dedicated space that was secure. And the upside is having it in the building means I could transmit town meetings over the, over the radio if I was in the same space. I only thought of that today, actually. So that's basically it. The, the space that's in, in the side of the stage, though, there's so much stuff in the, in the room. I can't tell how many outlets are there, or if there are any outlets. There's one light fixture, but I don't believe it works. The second floor.
It could be just a dead light bulb.
Yeah.
The second floor has one of those old-fashioned, I can't find the switch for it, and I don't believe there's any power up there in that room. So, from a logistical standpoint, it might not even work unless I can persuade someone to do that. And again, that would involve changing some of the infrastructure here, and that might be a problem, so.
Right. So I think we tabled the, the studio space question for tonight, but do, do we wanna at least get a, solicit a motion relative to the antenna? Because it's really the question that's before us today.
Well, it's the antenna, if you put the antenna there, but we can't, the cable can't be run or brought into the town hall, then the antenna up there is kinda moot.
Well, I did tell.
So do they have to be done almost simultaneously, or at least?
Well, well.
She doesn't have to have the studio near the antenna, what's your radius for your antenna?
Well, the, the antenna broadcast radius is six, six miles. But as far as the transmitter has to be connected to it, it has to be a wired connection.
That's the one I was talking about.
But that's the breadbox, isn't it?
Yeah, that's, yeah, that, yeah.
No, but I, I just meant the, the cable running, not where the breadbox would go, but like the cable running.
Physically running the cable, that is not, that's a case of a masonry drill, and someone who knows how to pull wire, I mean, that's not, that's not rocket science.
And I have, I have some suggestions on how to do that, you know? That would not involve any sort of interference with the activities that go on either here or the second floor. We do have that in our third floor, we could do the same thing, run the cable at the edge of the eaves. And then if we do the studio down to that space, or if the transmitter alone is located there, maybe that little tiny room at the top.
Yeah.
You know, just run it there. Put a small hole through the wall, put that nipple, that I guess is what it's called, that would seal the, the.
Weather tight, yeah.
Yeah, weather tight and, and be done with it, yep.
Cool.
You had mentioned, Cheryl, I know it was a few weeks ago, about this. You had thought about talking to Mr. O'Day, who owns the Little Red Building down there?
Yeah, in fact, Shelby Hill, I spoke with her. Because I wanted to be sure I was speaking to somebody who actually owned the building, and I knew she had had her school there. So I went to her, and I had to rehome my, my very last chicken anyway, and I knew she had a flock of dirty chickens, so I figured it was a good place to rehome him, 'cause he was lonely. So I went to her and I, I, she said she would take Blackie, my ostralup hen, in, and I gave her some supplies with that. And I said, by the way, the space you were in on Central Street, is that available? And if so, who should I talk to? She said, well, my dad owns it, and he would be the one to talk to, and I'll give him your name. And then when I spoke with her again to bring my hen to, to the school, she told me that they're actually going to reuse the space. It would have been perfect.
Oh, yeah.
It would have been absolutely perfect. It's really a shame it didn't work out, but, you know, I tried. They're going to put their youngest students back into that building, because the school's been so wildly successful, they need more space. In fact, they're, they're thinking of putting, building another structure at the back of the property for, as another classroom space as well, so. But, you know, I tried.
You tried.
I'm also going to put something on my Facebook page for the station, and maybe the Brookfield Community page, and the website, which I'm in the process of upgrading, asking if anybody has a suitable studio space near the center of town. Again, what's required is I need, I need unrestricted access, twenty-four seven, in case the transmitter goes out and I have to go fix things. I need the, I need it to be secure, and ideally, it would need to be accessible by volunteers, although that's not strictly a requirement for reasons I already mentioned. The, the, the stakes in this are that if I cannot get a space for the antenna, I will have to surrender the license and shut down the radio station. So.
How, another space, I know some new people had bought where the video barn was. No? No?
I, that's been sold to a company. And they're renovating it, and I doubt if they're gonna give us free space there.
Oh, no, 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 I just wondered, you know, that spot where it was, if they were.
I made a survey of the entire downtown area. And I picked out some likely, and I researched all of them, and there's some, including that one, I'm not even gonna bother to approach, because I know what the answer will be. There are a couple of unused spaces in town, but it's, there's not a lot of commercial space in Brookfield.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay. Any other questions?
No, I don't think so.
Okay, can we get a motion regarding the antenna?
Okay, so what would you like in the antenna?
I think I'd like a motion to, let me see, what's the term here? We need a vote to authorize that W A C F dash L P, right, relocate its antenna?
Okay, I will make a motion to authorize the antenna for W A C F L P, Apple Radio, to relocate it on the top of the town hall clock tower.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And if I could have one, I'll request one more motion. It's on the third page of that list I gave. In order for me to, excuse me, before you say that, I didn't notice until I just opened up the packet that I photocopied, that two of the pages stuck together, so they only have to be, oh, here, yes, but they said they loved it, so it's a.
I read it.
They're not before they got here. So it'll be the last page?
Right, well, that's, well, that's where I got the, that's where I got the first motion, right? And that, oh, and you want just to include, inclusion, and that you want us to draw up the notice of reasonable assurance to the FCC.
And I have an example here that Gavit drew up, which I wrote for them, basically, but.
Right, right, I, I think we have a copy of that as well.
Yeah, we do.
So, I think that's a byproduct of the vote. If we're gonna authorize it, can we just ask you to go ahead and draw up the notice of reasonable assurance? There we go.
And again, I don't need to vacate Gavit until December twenty twenty-three, but I'm trying to line up things as early as I can, so I'm not scurrying around at the last minute.
Makes perfect sense.
And if there are any official documents you need from the station, copy of our license, because Apple C was the original license holder, it's since been transferred to Apple Country Radio, Inc., a new nonprofit that I am president of, and, and which is also a license five oh one C three. But I can provide any. But I can provide any documents you'd like, um, I can email them by the end of the week if you want, but.
Certain, I mean, anything that you have, we'll take now, that way we can review it and try to get it lined up in advance, I think that's reasonable.
Anything that, I'm sorry.
Anything that you have or, or think that you have set up in terms of, like, fundamentally, even if the multi-year lease, any of those things that you have, just go ahead and send to us, and we can take them up at the next meeting.
Yeah, I can send you Gavitt's lease.
Yep.
Which is a commercial lease, but I'm sure, um, Kelly can, you know, just see that the terms are and adapt it that way. Um, I've got right now a copy, uh, hard copies of, um, our raw license, and a copy of the consent to assignment to the new entity, and a copy of our, um, yeah, a copyright new license, so I've got the old license, a consent to assignment document, and the new license, so. And the Gavitt, so why don't you just keep these?
Okay.
I copy them.
Great, thank you.
I got one more.
Well, good luck, Sharon.
Yes, good luck, because people really enjoy that, actually, and all the feedback I get about the radio station is that it's good music.
Well, right now, it's just an eight hundred, an eight hundred-piece playlist, I mean, the whole point of it being a community station is to have community programming.
Right.
And we never got to the point where we could do that yet, um, but I'm hoping at some point we can get to that, and, uh, I'm sort of regarding this as a momentary bump in the road, as it were.
Makes sense.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next item is approval of the select board minutes from seven nineteen twenty-two, nine, ten, fourteen, and eight sixteen twenty-two. Uh, could I get a motion to approve those?
I will make a motion to approve the select board minutes for seven nineteen twenty-two, nine, ten, fourteen, and eight sixteen twenty-two.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And then the last thing is correspondence from Charter regarding lineup changes. Um, it looks like, um, Black News Channel on, on one seventy-six or two thirty-two is being rebranded to The Griot uh, on the channel lineup serving your community. Any questions, feel free to contact John Mayer at seven seven four two four three nine seven three five, or johnmayer@charter.com. And can I get a motion to adjourn?
I will make the motion to adjourn at seven eleven.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.